You may have, because I'm here, I'm here to answer those questions. Karibunisana, I don't know whether there is somebody who wants to stand, to start this town hall? Is there anybody? Yes. How are we going to? Yes. Where do we start? Give it to that good gentleman there. Karibu.
Good evening. My name is Abdallah Shwabe and I come from Kisahuni. Mr. President, what is your plan in reforming economic opportunities? Making sure we have equal opportunities in all areas? And what are the policies are you going to do to make sure that there is equally job opportunity and economic growth in this country? My second question. What is your plan in reforming education system? Put it in mind that we have young people who are educated, but they don't have jobs. While we can say maybe our education system doesn't match with what is in the ground. So we also want to know what is your plan? Mr. President, His Excellency, one of your manifestos or once you were campaigning, you were saying that you will end drugs and substance abuse. We would love to know maybe approaches that you are doing or what are you doing to make sure that there is no abuse of drugs? Put it in mind, Nkoka is one of the issues affecting young people in this community. Finally.
I think let's keep, if we, because we have many people, let us just have one question per person, I think. You said Abdallah?
Yes.
Abdallah, leave it there.
The last one, please.
Okay, maybe.
Thank you. What is your plan also on the issues of robbery with violence? We have seen young, we have seen people being attacked in main roads, in towns. And what are you planning or what are you promising to these citizens on the issue of security in coastal area? Thank you.
Thank you very much, my friend Abdallah Asante Sana. You've spoken to the heart of my plan. You have asked me directly, what are you doing to create jobs? And I will give you five interventions that I am undertaking to create jobs in Kenya. Number one. When I came into office, I changed the law on housing to create the housing fund and the housing levy. Why? Because one of the programs that has potential to create millions of jobs. And this is not just in Kenya, this is globally. And I changed the law because the Housing Act that was passed in Kenya was passed at the same time as the Housing Act in Singapore. The difference is that Singapore made progress on their program on housing. We did not. And so I changed the law. I know it was a difficult decision. We had a robust conversation in Kenya. Today, let me tell you where we are. Today, because of the housing fund, we have 160,000 people working in the housing program. 160,000. People who are not working a year and a half ago. Today, we have engineers, we have concrete surveyors, we have architects, we have electricians, we have messengers, we have carpenters, we have steel fixers. We have a whole ecosystem of people who manufacture steel, people who manufacture cement, people who manufacture concrete. An array of businesses that have been created by the housing fund. We are building at the moment 103,000 housing units, including the ones I launched yesterday in Mthuga. I launched the first phase in Mthuga yesterday. I will be back here in Mombasa to launch the first 2,000 housing units in Yali. There are programs in, that we have already, programs across Kenya in 43 counties across Kenya that are undergoing this program. So that we not only create jobs, but we also create opportunities for business. And we also deal with the challenge of informal settlements and create living conditions for Kenya in decent in decent estates, in decent areas across Kenya. I will, I will give you a challenge. If you go to Mukuru, one of our largest informal settlements in Kenya, we are today building 14,000 units. And in the next couple of months, before the end of this year, I will be giving out keys to some of those houses that are ready. And for your information, some of these housing units are actually social housing units. For the first time, a Mama Boga or a Boda Boda or an ordinary Kenyan can own a house in a social housing program because they can pay 2,500, 3,000 every month and end up owning that house. There will be other Kenyans who will be owning other units. One bedroom, two bedroom, single, single units, three bedroom and different categories. That's number one. Number two, we are also using that housing program to make sure that we reduce on the cost of mortgage. Now, a teacher, for example, can have a mortgage at 9%. Today, if you go to the mortgage market, you will pay not less than 20%. So we are not only changing the housing program, we are creating jobs. That's number one. I have told you 160,000 jobs, real people working. Number two. When I came into office, in part of our program is the digital superhighway. We knew very well that there is an opportunity in the digital space because the world is going technology, the world is going digital. And that is why even government of Kenya, we are taking our government services to the digital space. When I came into office, only 320 government services were available online. Today, we have more than 20,000 government services online. And that space is important. And because we want to create more opportunities in the digital space, we are doing two things. Number one, we are working with companies like CCI, for example. Companies that have contracts to work from remote, but work for companies in Europe, in America, in other areas. CCI, for example, is working with us. I went to launch in Ruilu their first unit where they are hiring 5,000 Kenyans who are working for JetBlue companies in America, working from Kenya, and they are paid in dollars. That is one space. And what have we done? We have also done the second thing. We have changed the law on CDF. And we've changed the law on CDF so that it becomes possible for us as a country to invest in ICT hubs. And I have agreed with all members of parliament that every ward will have an ICT hub. I was there yesterday. I was in Kinango yesterday at the Technical Training College in Kinango. And I spoke to a gentleman called Juma. And Juma was telling me how he is making money on forex trading. And this is a student who is in Kinango. I went to Mthuga yesterday at the Technical Training College in Mthuga. I met the same people who are monetizing their talent, people who are earning money on the digital space. And I have been to many parts of Kenya and witnessed many young people in Kenya who today, courtesy of our ICT hubs, they are monetizing their talent, they are working online, some of them are students. In fact, very interestingly, I went to one school in, one college somewhere in Nandi. And I met a gentleman called Brian. And Brian told me, you know, Mr. President, I work for an AI company in Germany. Mind you, Brian has never been to Nairobi. And he doesn't even, he doesn't even have a passport. But he works for an AI company in Germany, he makes money. In fact, in that school, the principal told me, we are beginning to have a problem here in this school because some of these students, they earn more than the teachers. So on the digital space, we are working round the clock. And I have told members of parliament, they need, and I want to ask citizens to demand from our members of parliament that the program we have on ICT hubs, there should be an ICT hub in every ward. We can connect millions of young people to jobs on the digital space, to e-commerce on the digital space. Because what government is going to do? Members of parliament are going to build the ICT hubs. The government of Kenya is going to deliver internet. The government of Kenya is going to deliver trainers. We are going to deliver computers. It is up to the young people of Kenya to monetize their knowledge, their talent, their expertise and grow their incomes. That is program number two, that is going on as I talk to you. We have already distributed 16,000 computers to all our TIVets in Kenya today. Not tomorrow. And there are 120,000, mark that number, 120,000 young people in our TIVets who today are earning on the digital platform because of our training and because of what we have done in that digital space. Number three. What are we doing, you asked me, what are we doing to create jobs? Number three. We have a big program with the Ministry of Labor. In fact, I was today with my Principal Secretary for Labor, Shadrock Madime. I don't know whether he is anywhere in this auditorium, he is somewhere else. Shadrock Madime was with me today. I have changed the management of NEA, National Employment Authority, so that we can tap into opportunities to work outside Kenya. What are we doing in that space? I have negotiated many opportunities. Many people have been asking me, Mr. President, why are you traveling? Yeah? And I want to use this opportunity to answer them. I have been traveling to make sure that I connect Kenyans to jobs, both in country and outside country. We are signing 19 bilateral labor agreements with different countries. In fact, we just concluded one with Germany. So that what happens? So that some of our talented young people, because this is what other countries like Philippines have done. When you have good quality labor, you can use it to drive our economy. In fact, remittances from Kenyans, very hardworking Kenyans outside Kenya is all the way to about $4 billion. So that is a space we want to use because Kenyans have good education, they speak good English, they are self-motivated, they need less supervision. Any company anywhere in the world will want to hire a Kenyan. And therefore, we must use it because it is the asset that we have. And that is what I have been doing to try and connect Kenyans to jobs outside Kenya. I said today, for example, that those opportunities are available. In fact, if you go to the Ministry of Labor website, there are approximately 400,000 jobs, as I talked to you today. Different types of jobs. And that's why I was staying today. Some of those jobs, like the ones for, in, in, for nurses, for example. I was in Saudi Arabia the other day. They want 2,500 nurses. We are unable to, to meet that quota. And Saudi Arabia pays even for tickets. You don't have to pay any ticket, you just need to be qualified. And there are other countries we are negotiating so that we can get opportunities for Kenyans to work, not just in Kenya, but outside Kenya. Number four. You asked me, what am I doing to create jobs? Number four. We must begin to manufacture things, products that can be manufactured in Kenya instead of importing everything from everywhere. There was a time we were importing toothpicks, imagine. Yeah? And there are people who want to tell us, we must continue importing things and products. I made a decision that anything that we have the manufacturing capacity in Kenya, any product that we have manufacturing capacity in Kenya, we must begin to apply duty so that we stop products from other countries and build our own manufacturing capacity, hire our own young people, use our own raw materials, build our own wealth. And let me give you an example. Last year, we imposed duty on steel billets, on cement, on clinker and on furniture. There was a bit of noise last year because I put down my foot and I said, look, if we have manufacturing capacity in Kenya, somebody explain to me why we continue to import these products. Do you know what happened? Because we put duty on those products, steel, for example, steel billets, 11 companies that has closed, that had closed down because we had opened the door for importing of steel billets. 11 companies today hiring 16,000 Kenyans have opened. And they are now hiring Kenyans and producing steel billets locally in Kenya. You know what's interesting? The same people who were complaining last year, I met them this year. And they told me, Mr. President, you see, that duty imposed on that product last year. I told them, why don't you reduce it from 17% to 10%? They told me, no, 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 keep it at 17%. Why? Because they had now invested in Kenya, they were producing those products locally. And you know what? We saved 100 billion shillings of foreign exchange because of stopping to import steel billets. These are statistics that are out there, right? So it is partly why our dollar situation is stabilizing because we have stopped importing things, products that we can manufacture locally. 11 companies that had closed down, steel companies have opened, they are hiring Kenyans, they are using our local products. Do you know what? I was in Taita Tabeta today. And one of the things I'm going to do next, next month is to go to Taita Tabeta, where we have iron ore, which we have been exporting as a raw material. And many people were telling us stories. Now, the same companies who were complaining to me last year, they have said, one of them is now going to invest in Taita Tabeta iron ore. Not to export, but to manufacture steel locally using raw materials from Taita Tabeta county, including all the other counties where we have iron ore. That is the difference we make when we make the right decision. So we are building our own local manufacturing capacity. And what are we doing in that space additionally? We are making sure that we support local manufacture. It is the same reason why we said diapers, bumpers. We have 10 companies that are manufacturing these products in Kenya. Explain to me, somebody, why we should continue to impose these products from other countries? Explain to me why we continue to export our jobs? We have cotton which we are growing in Kenya. We have nowhere to sell our cotton. We cannot use it to produce our own products because we are importing everything. And that's why I said, this year, God willing, we want to make sure that we build our own local capacity. Industrialization, manufacturing, value addition is the way for us to go so that we can create more jobs, create more wealth and grow our economy. So we are not only expanding our manufacturing capacity, we are stopping unnecessary imports of products that we can manufacture locally so that we can expand our products, our, our manufacturing. And thirdly, on that space of creating jobs, now have six new special economic zones. In fact, export promotion zones in Kenya. So that product is, that, that space is going on. And one of the products that, one of the areas we are going to deal with is right here in Mombasa in Dongo Kundo. I just announced that we now have a partnership with Afriexim Bank to unlock the first 500 acres, 500 acres of Dongo Kundo for industrial productivity. So we have, I have given you five. I have told you, number one, our housing program is creating jobs. Number two, our digital space is creating jobs. Number three, our export of labor is creating jobs. Number four, our manufacturing is creating jobs. Number five, our special economic zones is creating jobs. That is what I'm doing for Kenya. I know you have asked me something else about, about education. I, let me take one or two questions and then I will consolidate and answer your question on education and on drug abuse. Yes, can I have a lady this time? Oh, yeah, that gentleman, yes, my good friend. Thank you very much. Broad-based government. I think that's your big question. Let me say this. Because of the challenges and the issues that came up in the last couple of weeks, going into one month, I committed to the country that I am going to form a broad-based government. And many people are asking me to explain, as Onsare there is saying, what is this broad-based government? It is broad-based government. That's what it is. It is what it is. Because, you know, because, you know, there has been this feeling that maybe this government is made of William Ruto's friends, right? And, and William Ruto's buddies. And I said, it is time, you know, I have friends. And, and I, I've seen many people ask me, okay, why did you, you know, dismiss the whole cabinet? And then you hired some back? Let me answer it this way. It was necessary to have a fresh start. Because as I told the people of Kenya, we are going to have a broad-based government and we are going to have a fresh start. So that even those I have given another opportunity to serve in cabinet, they must now know that this is new, the terms are different. We may have been friends, but now the terms are different. Number two, I also wanted other people to join in government because for a long time as Kenyans, we have, we've been divided on sides. And that's why I decided this time around, let me form an administration that has the broader face of Kenya. And that is why you see some of the members of my new cabinet coming from different formations, political formations. And I, and I said, I'm going to consult. And I'm going to talk to people who are, who are willing to talk to me. There are those who did not want to talk to me and that's fine, that's democracy. There are those whom we sat down and we agreed with and we agreed on their agenda. What are we going to do? In fact, at some point, I was having a conversation and the conversation went like, okay, the housing program. The housing program was in the manifesto of ODM and was in the manifesto of Kenya Kwanzaa. True? They're all there. The UHC program, it was on both sides of the divide. There are things that are common between us. And my question is, those things that we have no contest about, can we agree on those things and move the country forward on the things that are not in contention between the sides? And that is how we agreed with ODM to work on the broad-based government that captures some of the items that we all agree on. Number two. Let me clarify, as the party leader of ODM did, that we did not form a coalition government. So that nobody should tell us we are trying to compromise the opposition. We did not form, we have no formal coalition arrangement. What we have is running an administration on matters that we have agreed, members of ODM who have agreed to come and work with us so that we can put the country first and be able to deal with the challenges that brings Kenya to where it is. Whether it is our housing plan, whether it is matters to do with UHC and all the other items that we agree on as a nation are important to the people of Kenya. I am not very keen on who takes the credit. I am keen on the transformation of Kenya. So this is what I can, what I can tell you about, about that arrangement. Okay, we have, maybe we, yes, there is a lady there.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Kadra Hussain from More Radio. Mr. President, allow me to just ask a follow-up question on what my colleague has asked. You say that you consulted from different political formation. From what we have as a people, the people who are on the streets did not have T-shirts printed with political parties, you know, identification. Neither did they carry banners that had colors of representation of a political party. So in your broad-based government, as you have said, you've consulted and you've also had people from ODM working with you. Where is the interest of the people being featured in your broad-based government? As they are the ones who prompted us to have this change that we are having right now. Now to my question. I want us to just take, take time back, you know, from the inception of the Kenya Kwanzaa government, when you took the oath of office, you promised to protect the constitution of Kenya and ensure that the justice system functions well, you protect the rule of law. When you were making your statement on Wednesday, if I'm not wrong, you told us about amendments of some few clauses of the constitution, including Public Finance Management Act. You also talked about witness, something to do with that, that is an act of, in the constitution of Kenya. But the populace has this question. Why would we talk about amendments? Why those very clauses that we have in the constitution are not being respected? Like I'll give you an example, extrajudicial killings that we have seen, not unless, you know, not unless, you know, we can be given files of crime for the people who died. And then also on that, we had arbitrary arrests. We also have forced disappearances. Not unless also the government can explain to the people where these people are or maybe if you have the information on that. Also other things is that media rights and freedom from media censorship and also being granted the opportunity to have the information needed to be given to the public. Also another issue which I'll just say is on the commission and independent offices like KNCHR, that is the Kenya National Commission for Human Rights, which you can be publicly held to account when you said about the numbers of people who died. And also we have Aipoa, where they've been talking about frustrations in getting information that is necessary to prosecute some of the officers who had gone rogue during the protest. That is just an example I'm giving you about the constitution. And also something else on leadership and integrity, whereby even one nominated person among those whom you've nominated in your cabinet is actually facing graft case in the ESSC currently as we speak. And you talked about Singapore on development. Just a reminder, Mister President, that in Singapore, they have extreme serious penalties when it comes to matters corruption. Same as Indonesia, that just shows you how grave economic crimes are, especially matters corruption. So I want to ask you, Mister President, you've told the Kenyans to give you timeline, actually to give you time to work on these issues, to set things right. If we are to hold you responsible today, Mister President, what is the way forward from now on? Seeing that there is the respect of the rule of law, the very constitution that you sought to protect? And also in the event that these timelines expire, the ones you've given us, six months, nine months, three months, thirty days, if they expire and we see no change, would you wait for the youth to start pushing for you to, you know, out of government? And also would you hit to the pressure that right now we are actually seeing fourteen Kenyans have moved to the courts, actually, asking for the ouster of you, Mister President? What do you have to say about that?
Thank you very much. The fourteen Kenyans who have gone to court are exercising their democratic right. That is how free this country is. That you can actually go to any court and demand whatever you want in court. That is the taste of the freedom that I stand for in Kenya. And I want to promise you that those Kenyans who have gone to court, for whatever reason, they are free to do it and the courts are free to make whatever decision that is constitutional. You have asked me, I think, ten questions. Let me try and answer some of them. Number one, you have asked me, the people who went to the streets, they did not carry the color of any political party. That is correct. But remember, they carried the flag of Kenya. And that is why I'm saying, let us put the interest of the people of Kenya first. That is why I'm saying, this broad-based government must be a government that must do at the very least three things. And I stated them in my address to the nation. Number one is the subject of integrity, which you have spoken very clearly about, dealing with the challenge of corruption. I have made very specific interventions. I have suggested very specific interventions on how to deal with the challenge of corruption. I have said, we must change the Evidence Act so that corruption cases doesn't take five, ten years. That is what happens today, that we should be able to conclude corruption cases in six months. I am, I will be making the proposal to parliament. I hope parliament agrees with me so that we can deal with the challenge and monster of corruption firmly and decisively. Number two, I have given my undertaking to the judiciary. In fact, I had an engagement with the Chief Justice a few days ago on my support, on my administration support for the judiciary. It is demonstrable. When I came into office, I made sure that the judiciary has sufficient resources to be able to discharge their mandate, to be able to deal with corruption cases, to be able to deal with all the other cases. In fact, I am the president that has sworn in the highest number of judges in the shortest time in Kenya to facilitate the judiciary to be able to discharge their mandate. Because it is said, justice denied is justice, justice delayed is justice denied. And you can ask from members of the judiciary my support for the judiciary. In fact, when I came into office, there were six judges that have been denied their right to be appointed. I appointed them the first day when I got into office to demonstrate my commitment to the judiciary. Let me also say the following, that on the subject of corruption, I am very clear in my mind and I will mobilize resources that are available. I will mobilize every resource that is available to deal with the challenge of corruption. Number two, I also said, this new administration must deal with the issue of making sure that we create jobs in Kenya by making sure that we don't import the things that we can manufacture in Kenya. Number three, I said, this new administration I am setting up must deal with the challenge of making sure that tax expenditure, we spend four hundred billion shillings every year of taxpayers' money paying companies, paying institutions, claiming tax refunds, claiming VAT refunds in a process that is not thoroughly clear. And I have said that going forward, we have to deal with this problem. So I have laid out a clear roadmap on what the administration I've just appointed must achieve. I know you have said we must respect the constitution, which we must. And I gave my undertaking to the country that there will be no disappearance of Kenyans. I gave that undertaking. There will be no Kenyans in Rivayala. There will be no Kenyans in, in Tana River. There was a time we had thirty-something bodies of Kenyans in rivers. That will never happen under my watch. And I have said this with clarity. If there is any Kenyan who has disappeared, I want people to step forward and say, Kenyan so-and-so has disappeared. I would be very happy to deal with it. Because under my administration, I have said, there will be no disappearance of Kenyans again. There will be no extrajudicial killing of Kenyans. I have said that with clarity. And let me also say the following, that as we go forward, we must be truthful. When the Kenya National Human Rights stepped forward with fake news and said two hundred Kenyans had been massacred in Kidurai, it was a flat lie. Surely, I mean, a whole institution that is supposed to be self-respecting, paid for by the government of Kenya, how can they go and tell the country that two hundred Kenyans had been killed? Which was utter falsehood, you know? I hope that's not the organization you want to defend, you know? You cannot defend an organization that runs on fake news. And I will call them out, as Kenyans should call them out. We must stick to what is true. Forty-two Kenyans died, very unfortunately, in the events of the last one month. They shouldn't have died. Some of them in situations where the police were involved. Some of them in situations where criminals were involved. Some of them in different situations. All those situations are under investigations. And I have given undertaking that the government of Kenya will support those families even as we get to the bottom of what happened in those situations. I have also undertaken that there are Kenyans who unfortunately lost property. We are also going to support them because it was none of, nothing of their doing that occasioned all that happened to happen. Let me also say the following, that I am a great believer in the constitution and I will protect, I mean, I mean, many countries that have gone through what Kenya have gone through. Bangladesh, for example, they switched off the internet, they switched off the TVs, they did whatever they did. Kenya is running full steam, internet is available every day. People are talking from all over the place. I mean, newspapers are writing whatever they want. The TV has four screens. They are showing what's happening in Condela, what's happening in Suyinwe. I mean, what further, what further freedom sure he would use from me, you know? I have the machinery to switch them off. I did not switch them off. Because I am a believer in the rule of law and I am a believer in free media. You know, that's why the media can go out and demonstrate and call me names and do whatever they want. Doesn't bother me. But that is what freedom is about. That's what democracy is about. So I am very clear about what Kadra has said. All you have said that is really, that has really come to me is the young people who were out there did not have colors of parties or regions or communities. They had Kenyan flags. And that is why I am committed to making sure that the interests of Kenya, even as I appoint the new administration, come first. What we do about Kenya first. So that is what I wish to say. Asante sana. Yes, my friend?
Thank you very much, Your Excellency. My name is John Jacob Currier from KBC. I want us to set the tone of this conversation, Mister President. Mister President, when the JNZs came out to the streets, their demand was that you overhaul the entire cabinet, which you did. You have defended the reappointment of ten cabinet secretaries back to your cabinet. The big question Kenyans are asking today is, is President William Ruto a listening president? That is a big question tonight. Is President William Ruto a listening president?
Okay, I think there are too many media people asking. I think, I think citizens want to ask this question. I think, let's just relax. I think the media have been asking me too many questions. Anyway, I am gojeni kidogo. Let me, let me answer him anyway. Because Jacob has said something that is fundamental. Am I listening? Yes. How else would I have twelve of my cabinet secretaries out? If I wasn't listening, more than half of my cabinet have left. It is, it has never happened in Kenya. It has never happened in Kenya's history that more than half the cabinet has gone in one go. So I am listening. And I have said, even the ladies and gentlemen that have come back to cabinet, they have come back to cabinet on new terms. We may have been friends, we may have been acquaintances, we may have... But now, this is different, you know? We are going to work on the timelines the people of Kenya have given us. And some of the good gentlemen that I have, and ladies that I brought on board are people who have a proven track record. And many of them, Kenyans agree, have done a good job wherever they've been. Yes, let me listen to the lady. Oh, one, oh, this side.
Hamjumbo. Kwa majina naitu wa mwanamkuu nondo, mkazo alikoni sub county. Moishmiwa rais. Swalalangu la ya kwa upande wa feri, feri amtongue. Sisi wananchi alikoni twapata shida sana pale feri wakatuwakuvuka. Sedui shida inatokeapi kwa sababu wakati kulikuwa kona bridge ali wa toni, likua kidogo kuna unafu. Lakini tangu ile bridge iondolewe tunapata tabu sana pale likoni wakatuwakuvuka. Na shida sedui ikoapi kwa sababu akua kulikuwa na feri amtongue ikifanyakazi na badae ili xiaivo yani. Kwayo naomba unejibu swalailo naomba. Shukran.
Siku skia jinalako?
Mwanamkuu nondo.
Mwanamkuu nondo?
Yeah.
Asante sana mwanamkuu.
Thank you.
Nita kujibu hivi. Just give me a minute, let me answer mwanamkuu because it's a very important question. In fact, yesterday, when I stopped in Liconi, the people in Liconi asked me directly that question. And I didn't get it properly. It is later because I answered a different question. It's good you have brought it into focus today. The, that bridge, we had built it and it was a bridge, a pedestrian bridge for people to cross. It had two problems. Problem number one is that it caused a lot of delay in the port. The port, people said, it was taking more than ten hours for, for ships to cross. That was problem number one. Problem number two is that the workmanship was not very good. So yesterday, after it was raised to me by the people in Liconi, I have instructed both Kenha and KPA to get us a solution for that problem. So I will come back to you, mwanamkuu, I will come back to you and to the people of Mombasa and specifically the people from Liconi on what it is that we are going to do to make sure that that bridge works. But let me also say this, just hold your horse. Let me also say this, there are two other things that we are doing. Shortly, we will open the connection of the bridge through Kibundani. In fact, I intend to come back here, maybe in a month, to make sure that that bridge is opened so that we can also have a different access from the other side going into Liconi and going into Kualé. And then thirdly, thirdly, when I was in Japan earlier this year, we agreed with the Prime Minister of Japan to conclude the Mombasa Gateway Bridge. The Mombasa Gateway Bridge is going to sort out the problem of the ferry you have here in Liconi. We are now going to have a bridge the same way we have a bridge in Njali. We are now going to have a bridge in, but it's going to be a different bridge because it has to allow ships to go through. We have agreed, we have signed the contracts to be able to have a modern. In fact, it will be the biggest piece of infrastructure in East Africa. Because it's going to close, it's going to cost close to one hundred billion shillings to build that Mombasa Gate Bridge. And I was with a Japanese ambassador yesterday, when I was in, no, the day before, when I was in Kilifi. And we have agreed to have a session so that we can progress that discussion. So I have told you three things. I am looking at the pedestrian bridge. We are going, we are going to conclude the bridge through Kibundani. And we are well on the way constructing the Liconi Bridge, the big bridge going into the future. Okay, let's, let's get somebody from this side.
Skize uya mama?
Asante sana. Mister President, nina maswalima wili tu? Na na furai umegusia Forex trading. Utamini mama kama mimi nafanya u Forex. Kama ngikua wotu wa nafanya Forex hakuna mtu wa ngikua na kusumbua apa? Ngikua tumetengeza more than a hundred dollar right now. Cause I do boom and crash. So nimepeleka hili so mukule kivijijini machineani. Vidjana wanalak only smartphone na capital. Na wenkile ndandelea kuwafunza singependa kufa na hii knowledge bila hau kujiwa. So lejambola pili niwazazi wenye wa toto wale mavu. Nimetembaya machineani, Mister President. Ndawa zinavunjika kwa sababu ya hao wa toto. Kwa sababu mtoto kioneka na vile mzazi wakunza kutoka ni baba. Mtotu wanachiwa mama. Mtotu yule labda niwakubebwa kwaniko kwa juwa na kuregesho kwa nyumba. Ningependa hivi. Hizi shule zoteza public kama ungeruhusu. Kila shule iwe nadarasta na vifa via kufundisha wale watoto. Wa sababu mto wanatoka Shanzu, mpaka tonoloka, ilimto taka pate elimu. Ukiangalia wame lala njah, feya hakuna? Ati keweze kana, kama onaza kuatolea magari ya kubeba wale watu wa disabilities. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Si kupata jina lako? Pole. Elizabeth.
Kadzo.
Elizabeth Kadzo.
We were with you in Shanzu.
Ayah. Uyu Elizabeth ametaja mambomawili ya muhimu. Jumbo lakuanza, amesema ye nifanyi biashara katika Forex trading. Kwa wale ambao, wali kua wanafikiri ya kwamba pengine Forex trading ni story. Utamfata uya Elizabeth, ataku eleza siyo story ni biashara. Na amesema tati zo kubwa ni mambomawili. Capital na smartphone. Ni nini tumefanya? Last year, tuko na kampu nimbili sasa Kenya. Ambazo zinatenganeza smartphones in Kenya. Ile smartphone ilikuwa inauzuwa 11 kumi na mbili, 11 kumi na tano. Sasa inapatikanakwa 40 dollars, which is like 5,000 shillings. Badu tunaisuku machini. Katika finance bila ambayo ilianguka juzi, tulikuwa tumewandoa ushuru kwa smartphone. Ndio watu wengi wa wese kufikia kununuwa smartphone wa sababu ndio inaweza kuasaidia kwa biashara. I am going to pursue, ama nitofuatilia, kwa kikisha kwamba, we continuously reduce the cost of smartphones, ama kupunguza garama ya smartphone. Ndio vijana wengi, kina mama wengi, watu wengi wa wese kufikia kununuwa, wa wese kufanya biashara katika hali mbali mbali. Lakini, nataka nikueleza pia Elizabeth. Ya kwamba, pia tumabadilisha sharia? Sasa hawa vijana, ambavo hawa na smartphone. Hao abunge sasa kutakuwa na ICT hub, killer word. Na yo ICT hub itakuwa na free internet, itakuwa na free computer. Itakuwa na mahali wanaweza kufanya yo biashara, including ya Forex trading. Vile hule jamaa nimekuambia juma wa kule kinango ana fanya. So we are going to expand more opportunities for them to do that. Let me come to your second question. Ishi umesema niya wale mavu? Na nikweli? Pale badu tuko na changa moto. Na ndio sababu, nimefanya mambomawili tango ningia katika office. Jumbo lakuanza, nimesema, we lazima tupanue ile mpango wa cash transfer. Ambayo inafikia watoto wale mavu, watu wanauishi katika, wanauishi na wale mavu ndio tuwese tuwafikie wengi. Tume wasajili watu wenkine waze wamiaka ambayo sabini wale mavu. Tume wasajili wenkine 11 mia tano in the last one year. Na tumewa weka sasa katika program ya cash transfer, number one. Number two, vile vile, tumesema io program ya cash transfer. Ilikuwa inachuka mudamrefu sana. Wali kua wanangojia miyasi sita, miyasi yine kabla hau jalipwa ile pesa ya cash transfer. Sasa tumetbadilisha sharia, nilisema na nimitimiza ya kwamba kabla mushara ya rais kulipwa. Lazima cash transfer ilipwe. That is happening today. That is happening today. We are paying money for cash transfer, for people living with disability, for the aged and for orphans. At the same time as we pay salaries for public servants. They used to wait for six months, four months, eight months. But as I made a commitment, I have kept that commitment and people like the ones Elizabeth is talking about are going to be beneficiaries in that space. But I still agree with you on the third space. Ya kwamba, siyo lazima watoto wale mavu waende kwa shule ya watoto wale mavu. We must make it possible for wale watoto wanaiishi na wale mavu wasome pamoja na watoto wenkine katika shule zetu zoti. Na nilipata hiyo habari, na umenisaidia wa sababu sasa leo nitafanya hiyo kazi umesema. Na amini, watu wa wizara ya elimu wamo mahali fulani, nitawatafuta? Na nitawapatia amri ya kwamba, what Elizabeth has said? Because it is part of our manifesto, we were implementing it. Lakini hatuja ikamelisha, sasa nitai fatilia kwa kasi. Asante sana, Elizabeth. Maybe somebody in front here, one of these good people, na nipale?
Thank you, Excellency. My name is Alawi Abzain, I come from the old town of Mombasa. Alawi Abzain. I am, I'll spend a better part of my life promoting heritage and culture. And in my travel around the world, I've seen that the old town or the oldest part of cities generate a lot of income. But unfortunately, when I look at the old town of Mombasa, which is actually the Amlikole Court of Kenya. Everything in Kenya started in the old town of Mombasa. If we take a trip here and go and look at the old town of Zanzibar, the stone town of Zanzibar, it makes millions, millions and millions. Your Excellency, I'm using this opportunity to plead to you that the old town of Mombasa, we need to have an old town planning commission that will plan the old town and make it like the old city, let's say of Rome or Zanzibar, such that the government can be able to make like 5 billion just from the old town. Right now, it is the way it is. That is one. Two, I've seen for many years, the previous administrations, they've been writing off loans for sugar cane, coffee, tea. We come from the coast. Who you mvvi akiharibikiwa? Mbona hatuski serikali yetu. Ikisema chukuwa hi pole. Kwanisisi, sisipia tunalipa tax. Kwevo hili mimi linanihuzunisha sana. Koshauri, just like other Kenyans wa kiharibikiwa, the other time tulukotu naona 500 inapatia watu wa mira. Sisi shambalitu ni India notion. Asante sana.
Asante sana, mze Alawi. Nakubaliana nawewe ya kwamba, we can monetize our heritage. Nakubaliana wewe kapsa ya kwamba heritage yetu, kama nipale old town and all the other heritage is, is something that we can monetize. And I'm sure my good friend Hersi, who is in the tourism sector agrees that apart from our beaches, apart from our wildlife, there is more around culture, around food, around, you know, what makes Kenya, what it is, that we can package to be able to get more tourists into Kenya. And, and I couldn't agree with you more. And I would want to, maybe as I conclude the forming of government, I would want to see what is it that we can discuss? How can we come up with a plan around old town? How, how do we incorporate other products? And maybe Hersi, you will help me there to tell, to say something because you are an expert in that, in that space. But let me, before I, I ask you to say something there, let me say about blue economy. Alawi, let me tell you very clearly. I am very clear in my mind how important blue economy is to Kenya. Not just to the people of the coast, but to Kenya. Today, we are unlocking about 20 billion shillings from the blue economy. The potential is five, six times more. My intention is that in the next three years, we should be making between 80 billion and 120 billion shillings from our blue economy resources. And that is why I have done three things on the blue economy. Number one, when I came into office, I changed the program that was there in the blue economy. There was a program funded by the World Bank that was focused on putting up buildings, holding seminars, holding workshops. I changed that program and I told our partners, I will not implement this program if it is not going to target what is important for the people of Kenya. Our development partners, and I must thank the World Bank, they agreed with me and we changed that program. It is the program, Alawi, that brought me here on Friday. On Friday, I was at the showground here. On, at the showground, we gave out 1.7 billion shillings. Yeah? To 612 groups so that they can change their livelihoods. On Friday, we are committed that we are going to buy 25 deep sea fishing boats. Because the boats we have at the moment, the ones we bought for our fishermen, about 120, cannot go very far. You can only go there for an hour or two or three. Now, we're going to buy another 25 fishing, deep sea fishing boats that can take a day or two into the deep sea to be able to get us the fish that we want for our country. And number three, for the first time in the history of Kenya, we have licensed an industrial fishing vessel flying the Kenyan flag. For the first time, that we'll do industrial fishing, one that can go for one month into the deep sea and get us tuna, tuna and get us all the other fish. And by the way, that ship is going to be making about 4 billion shillings into Kenya every year. Processing the fish here in Kenya, exporting the fish from here in Kenya. And my intention is to have 10 of those industrial fishing boats, minimum, by 2027. In fact, it is a conversation that I have already had with my friend Joe. And I have told him, this is the minimum I expect of you, God willing, when you are cleared by parliament. Yeah? So that is what we are doing around the fishing, the fishing space. We are putting the highest resources ever put in fishing and in the blue economy that any administration has put in that economy. So we are building 11 fish landing boats in Lake Victoria. We are building five fish landing, fish, fish landing ports here in, in sites here in the coast. We are putting one in Moape, down in, in, in Kualé. We are putting one here in Mombasa. We are putting another one in Kilifi. We are putting one more in, in Lamu and we are putting one in Kipini in Tanadiva. I have also put in resources to build the first national marine culture resource and training center so that we can equip our fishermen and women and people working in that space with their relevant skills and competences. We have trained 6,202 cookswains to be able to unlock the potential in our, in our, in our fishing space. I was in Kualé yesterday. We are building a 2.6 billion fishing port in Shimoni. So you agree with me, Alawi, that we are investing in the blue economy and we are not changing the people of this region or changing our blue economy ecosystem. Let me, let me ask this good brother, maybe just to help me, my good friend Hersi. You want to say something about that post, that space, my good friend Alawi was saying?
Thank you, Your Excellency, and welcome to Mombasa. You know, it's said that government wall over. They're not very good in telling their story. And when they attempt to tell their story, people also don't believe them. So we are honored that you've invited us to address us and to answer, in fact, no sensitive questions, which to me is a great thing. And you've just described the democracy we enjoy in this country, which we don't take for granted. So thank you very much, Your Excellency. You know, I sleep, I dream tourism. And you're very passionate about creating jobs and employment for young men and women. Tourism is the easiest vehicle available to you and to your government in creating employment for our people. Kenyans are overall warm and friendly people. The other day I said, while other countries struggle with attitude issues, Kenyans, you don't have to teach them how to smile. It's natural. Kenyans and Swahili language is the only language that puts a foreigner and a guest on the same pedestal and we call them wageni. We treat them well. We are looking at 2.5 million arrivals this year. And we struggled for a long time, Your Excellency, to hit even 2 million. Where I sit and with my colleagues here, there is no reason why we cannot hit 3.5 million. We don't hit 4.5 million. And by the time we're hitting 2027, there's no reason why we should not even hit 5 million. No doubt. But Your Excellency, for us to do that, there are few things that we need to do. And we call it the low hanging fruits. No sweat, very easy things. Number one is accessibility to our country. You know, international tourism, for them to get here, Kenya is considered a long haul destination. Anything above five hours is a long haul. Morocco, Algeria, Egypt are considered short haul, which is four, five hours. Kenya and South Africa are Sub-Saharan, so we hit eight hours and above. Now, coming to air connectivity is a big challenge. But I must also commend our national carrier. I'm one of the critics of our national carrier. But let me also tell you, Your Excellency, the day we don't have a national carrier is the day we will be spending transit time in Dubai for 11 hours. Ethiopia will be holding us for 14 hours to connect to another country. But as long as they know we have an airline, they'll never mistreat us. And one thing also we don't know is that our national carrier, despite all its challenges, is the biggest source of passengers into Kenya. 60% of the people coming to Kenya actually come aboard KQ. In a single day, they have between 110 and 130 flights daily. All the rest put together don't even hit 45%. Now that takes me, before I come to the open skies, Your Excellency, please address the issues bedeviling our national carrier. We've been bailing them out ear in, ear out. But there are some fundamentals that need to be sorted out. As a national carrier, they are not given priority at our airports, both JK and Mo International. When you go to Ethiopia, Ethiopian Airlines is given red carpet. BA is given red carpet at Heathrow, but KQ does not get that. Coming to open skies and specifically for Mombasa, and we've been fighting this, for this for a long time, Your Excellency. 2007, 2008, we were getting 42 charters a week, but the charter business is dying. We now need to replace them with scheduled flights. The likes of Turkish, the like of Atari are flying into Mombasa, but after COVID, they were denied the license. The likes of Turkish, the like of Qatar are flying into Mombasa, but after Covid, they were denied the license. And we are, we are told, we are trying to protect our national carrier. If Kenya Airways was flying to Istanbul, we would not be asking for a flight to Istanbul, Your Excellency. When you take an airline like Turkish Airlines, it's going to connect Mombasa to 18 cities in Germany alone. You take an airline like Qatar, it's going to take us to over 125 cities globally. That is direct to Mombasa. And we appreciate that you approved, uh, fly Dubai to come into Mombasa. And that is one key thing that we need to do. Next is tourism investors. Your Excellency, good news is, we have a lot of people who are willing to come and invest in Kenya today, beach hotels. But guess what? Getting land is a nightmare. Getting land is a nightmare. When you go to Diani today and you go from Indian Ocean Beach Club all the way to Galu, you'll find a lot of parcels of land that are still empty, 10 acres, 20 acres, 30 acres. Your Excellency, most of these guys were allotted this land at independence. They were allotted this land, second president when he came into power. Zanzibar next door will not allow you to sit on a piece of land for more than three years. You either develop it or you surrender it, back to government and somebody takes it. So Your Excellency, as you sit now here, we have had investors who came here. They've disappointed and they've had to move elsewhere. Because getting land is just next to impossible. And when you get the prize people are asking for, and yet they were allotted for free and they sat on it for 40 years and they didn't did nothing with it. So Your Excellency, that is something we really need to address. We've already brought you to the attention of our Excellency, the governor Kwale, and she is committed to address this. As we address that challenge, Your Excellency, another big challenge we are facing because it's going to impact negatively on our efforts to create employment. Prime beach plots are being subdivided into quarter acres, into half acres. When you put 20 homes, the most you can do is employ a guard and a housemate, that's it. When you take a 10-acre plot and you put up 150 rooms, you're looking at 300 young men and women who have been employed. And the taxes that go to government is big time as well. So those are issues that we'd like you to address. And then finally is the visa, an ETA that you gave us. ETA, our please this, select countries, can you give them ETA on arrival? Thank you, Your Excellency.
Thank you very much, Hery. I thought you were going to give me some credit. That your hotels are between 80 and 90% full, isn't that true?
That's what, that's what Your Excellency said. We are going to hit 2.5, we will even go to 3.5. We've done very well and we can't thank you enough.
Thank you. Thank you, Hery. Just for, for, just allow me one minute to tell, to agree with my friend Hery that we can say many things, but Kenya is going places. You may not want to agree with me. We moved the numbers in 2020, in 2022, we were at 1.4 million arrivals. Last year, we went to between 2 million and 2 million and a bit. This year, we are going to hit 2.5, the highest arrivals in the history of Kenya. This year is going to happen. And it is because of the profile we have built. You know, many people accuse me, oh, you have been this place, you have been this place. I am the chief marketer of Kenya. You know, every place I go, I raise the profile of Kenya. Kenya is today respected globally. Kenyans, Kenya today, in any forum you, you go, they will say what is Kenya saying. Right? So, and it's because of that what we are raising the profile of our country. I just wish everybody can do their bit. So that we don't create instances where people begin to doubt what Kenya stands for. I am very confident that by 2027, 2028, the magical 5 million tourists, we will get there if we go with the trajectory we are, we are going. And I will continue to push the limits for Kenya. I will continue to profile Kenya positively in, in a way that the world begins to, to think about Kenya. Number two, I agree with Hery that already we have 42 countries where visa under the ETA program is automatic. When they apply, within five minutes, less than five minutes, they can travel to Kenya. And like before, where they had to look for the Kenyan embassy, go and queue for visa, do all manner of things. The next step, which Hery is telling me, is that we need even to take it further and say, there are people who, even if you don't apply ETA wherever you are, if you arrive in Kenya, you can be given on arrival. That I agree with and I'm going to work on it. So that we can, we can build another, another layer of countries that, to make it easier for people to come to Kenya. Just by changing the ETA, just by changing the visa, the visa regime, which I did in the last six months, we have 60% more people coming to Kenya today, just by making it easier for people to come to Kenya. Many people were asking me, why are you doing this? Oh, the country is going to be unsafe and that kind of thing. I mean, we, we have made sure that there is sufficient checks and balances for us to make sure that Kenya is accessible. I agree with you that I need to do something about Kenya Airways. And I want to, just, just relax, Kidogo. Uh, I need, something needs to be done about Kenya Airways and I am working hard at it. For your information, this year, it is the first year Kenya Airways made a profit. First year. And I, I still want to work on it. But I, I'm working on it so that we make sure that we straighten it and it can serve our country better. We still have a long way to go and I'm still applying my mind to it. Um, I agree with you that we need to approve a few more airlines. It's a delicate balance, people, it's a delicate balance between allowing more people to fly here. Because anybody we allow to fly here, they must also give us an opportunity to fly to their destination. So that it becomes even. So we are discussing with other airlines. We just approved another four flights by the UAE airline, um, what is it, Etihad? Yeah, we just, we just, we just, the guard is here. We've just approved Etihad to fly four times a week. So we're looking at other opportunities for us to be able to get more flights. I've heard you about Turkish Airlines, we will look at it. Uh, my PS Dagar is there, please. Let, huh? Turkish and Qatar, so we will, we will look at it. But you know, there is something called in law, quit pro quo. You scratched my back? Yes, yeah, so, so we don't want just to do it. And let me say, just, just give me a minute. Let me say this, it's true. Land is a problem in Kenya. It is the reason why real estate is very expensive in Kenya. And it is the reason why I decided that to be able to build affordable housing, we are going to use public land. That is why we have money to reduce the prices significantly. Because the land cost was contributing 40% of the cost of every house. But now when we take out the land cost, we substantially reduce and make it affordable for more Kenyans to be homeowners. Um, we will need to think about what we are going to do so that we can make investment, especially on tourism infrastructure, eh, much more affordable. By the way, I am doing something on some of our conference facilities in Bombers, here in Mombasa. We're trying to get investors to be able to support us in, in that space. And I'm also doing something, one moment, I'm, I'm also doing something about the airport. Let's be honest, Kenyans, let's be honest. Yeah, the airport we have in Nairobi is made of canvas. In the middle of a tarmac, that is the arrivals. I mean, this is a temporary structure we put up almost, I don't know, seven years ago. We, we don't, Ethiopia have a brand-new airport. Uh, Rwanda have a brand-new airport. And it is the reason why we, we need to work with investors to give us a new airport in Nairobi. I have seen many people saying, William Ruta wants to sell the airport. Am I a madman? How do you sell a strategic national asset? You have to be insane. You know, so we must have the right investment for the airport. The airport is a strategic government asset, national asset. What we want to do in the airport is to work under the PPP program. And I, and people must understand PPP has the potential, public-private partnership, has the potential to bring in private sector money blended with public, uh, public sector investment to be able to create an outcome that brings win-win. Let me tell the people of Kenya, for example, let me give you an example. We are all celebrating the Nairobi Expressway. It nowadays takes five minutes, 10 minutes from the airport to Serena, true? Do you know that that Nairobi Expressway was not built with government money? It was built by the private sector, under their private-public partnership arrangement. You know, and, and, and that is the model that we are going to use to extend the superhighway from Nairobi to Nakuru, to Eldoret, to Malaba. That is what we are going to use to do many of our roads. That's what we want to do with our airport. We want to work with the private sector for them to do three things that are critical for our airport. To build a new terminal, to build a new runway. And to make sure that we refurbish what we have and remove the canvas. You know, it's a very shameful thing. The airport we built in 1970, I saw the plaque there, by Jomo Kenyatta. That, that so many, almost 50 years ago. Now, the, the capacity was 7 million passengers. Last year, we had almost 9 million passengers. We've outs, we are actually 10 years behind schedule in modernizing our airport. Other countries are ahead of us. I want to persuade us as Kenyans, let us not buy into fake news. Let us not buy into propaganda. There is no government that can sell a national asset, a strategic national asset, like the airport. We are going to work in an open and transparent manner to make sure that we develop the airport using legal instruments that can be audited by parliament and by other agencies to make sure that they are value, they bring value to the people of Kenya. So the same thing that Hery is saying, to develop the infrastructure here. We do not have sufficient conferencing facilities. The KICC we have in Nairobi was built through Arambe, imagine, by Kanu. Those days, then it was taken over by government. It is now 50 years old. We need a modern conferencing facility if Kenya is truly going to be a hub for tourism. We need one in Nairobi, we need one in Mombasa. And that's why we are working with the Mombasa, former Mombasa, um, resort here to see how we can get investors to be able to develop new conferencing facilities. Okay. Uh, there is a lady there in, in uniform, some very nice uniform.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Lucy Wamaidama Chogu, the vice president, Kenyatta University. And I want to represent all students in the universities in Kenya. Because actually, we were on the streets and we would wish to inquire some answers from you. First is to appreciate the government and the Ministry of Education because you've set an event on the 9th of August at KICD for all the student leaders and all the students to discuss on the funding model. So some of the questions I would wish to inquire answers from you, Mr. President. Number one, why did you come up with the funding model? How does the funding model work? Do you feel like the implementation of the funding is okay? What is the criteria used to group people to different categories? That is about the funding model. Number two, the accommodation prices in the universities, that is the hostel prices. They are very expensive for us to afford. Mr. President, what are you doing about this? We cannot be able to afford houses or hostels where we are living in universities. What are you doing, Mr. President, about this? Something else about the job opportunities. Once we graduate from the university, we are told, maybe when you go and seek for a job opportunity, we are asked to give a five-year work experience or a three-year work experience. Yet, we've just graduated. Where will we get the experience from if you are not given the chance to get the, the experience? So, Mr. President, how can you help us on that? Lastly, Mr. President, what are you doing to re-engineer the National Youth Council? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Lucy. And by the way, you are very smart. Now, um, let me say, you've asked me very, two fundamental questions. The new university's funding model, why? Very important question, why? When I came into office, the universities were struggling. They had a 60 billion shilling debt. Many universities were paying their lecturers half the price, half, half the salary. It was near a crisis. And many vice-chancellors agree with me. So it became necessary. And you know, I have a history. Once upon a time, I was minister for higher education. So I understand that space pretty well. And when I came into office then as Minister for Higher Education, I am the one who developed and, and created the space around our TIVTS. Because there was a missing gap in our education system. I am very proud that today, our TIVTS are a big portion of our higher education learning infrastructure. Let me go back to the funding model. The funding model, by the way, affects both our university students and also affects our TIVTS students. So what did I do? I did three things. Number one, we made a commitment as government that we are going to give every student 80% scholarship and loan. But because we could not afford, especially because the number of students. When we made that commitment, it was like 15 years ago. But you know, as the numbers increased in the university, it became difficult for us to meet that commitment. And so what ended up happening was that while we committed to pay 80%, we ended up paying 50%, some cases 45%. So what happened? There was a huge funding gap in our universities, a huge funding gap in our universities. And our universities were struggling. They couldn't pay for services, they couldn't pay lecturers, they couldn't run their programs. And we ended up with affecting the quality of education in our universities. You couldn't attend as many labs as you, as was required. You couldn't attend as many practicals as you required. We ended up compromising on our education. So what did I do? I said, I said, we need to be honest with ourselves. And we said, there are parents like William Ruto who can afford. Why would William Ruto be given 80%, why would the child of William Ruto be given 80% scholarship? The same as a child of Mama Mbuga. What happens is that both our children end up suffering. So, we changed the model. We said, since there is a means testing instrument that has been used for 20 years to assess every student on the basis of the information they supply, and it has worked in Kenya for 20 years, let us use that means testing instruments, instrument that is available at the Higher Education Loans Board to assess every student. And we changed the model so that children from vulnerable families, children from parents who are less endowed, we move them from getting 80% to getting 95%. And children from parents like myself, we move them from getting 80%, we move them to 60% because we can afford, right? So, we had five categories. We changed it into five categories. And you know what, Lucy? Because of the change in that model, we also said that scholarship is going to be available on application. Because you know, the old model, every student without even applying, they were given scholarship. But there are parents who do not need it. And for your information, 20% of students last year did not apply for scholarship. They went and their parents paid because they didn't need it. What has happened? Of that 20% of the students, we now have more money to pay for children from vulnerable families. That is how we, the model has changed. So we now have five categories. We have those that get 95%, we have those that get 90, we have those that get 70, we have those that get 60, and we have categorized and we are using what we are calling an instrument called, called means testing instrument that tests the ability of parents. We will continue to perfect, I am, we'll continue to perfect that instrument. There will always be maybe a problem here and there, but we will make sure that we keep that program so that we increase the level of funding in our universities. What has happened? Because of this new funding model, we have had to increase money that we are putting in the education of our university students. From about 45 billion, this year, we put 82 billion shillings. We are putting more money because we have to be realistic. We cannot send our kids to school and we haven't provided for funding for them to go and be taught. We would be cheating our children if we tell them, go to school, and we cannot pay the lecturers in school, we cannot pay for their classes, we cannot run the programs. So that is why I have decided I am spending more money in education. It's much more expensive for me, but it is better to have students who graduate when they have gone through proper school with proper learning, with their parents, with their teachers paid and their lecturers paid, and we have increased the budget for education in that manner. Number two, I know there is a problem. And the problem is a problem of communication. Because many parents received an admission and they saw there the costs, the cost, the course costs 300,000. Then the parent said, okay, where am I going to find these 300,000? I have since instructed the ministry that although the cost is 300,000, there must be clarity that this course is 300,000, yes, but a parent can get up to 95% scholarship and loan of that, of that, of that amount. So, I think now there is going to be greater communication so that parents can understand that whatever it is that is appearing on those admission letters is not the money demanded from them. It is just the cost of the course. But that course will be met largely by scholarship, partly by loan, and very, uh, in, in, very significantly by parents paying the fee they have been paying. I have told you why it is work in progress. This is the first year we are implementing. I know there are still teething problems, but we will want to work with student leaders like you, Lucy, and others so that we can properly explain. And I really want to invite student leaders from university. I am prepared to engage with them. I am ready to engage with them. Because I am doing what is best for all our university education. I am very passionate about education and, and, and it is the greatest equalizer. It is the reason why I decided to hire 56,000 new teachers because I believe education is the greatest equalizer and no child should be locked out from education. Hostels. Lucy has said, and I agree with you, I have been to many parts of Kenya and students live in squalor. They live in very bad conditions. They live sometimes in slums and they live in very dangerous places. And that is why I have made the decision that we are going to work with our Ministry of Housing. We are going to leverage on our housing fund to support our hostels in our universities. I came from Taita Taveta today. I made an announcement in Taita Taveta that Taita Taveta University, we're going to build 1,500 hostels. Oh, the, Mr. President, now you can take it to your students. So, we are going to have, and, and, and they will, they will pay for them, but they will pay a reasonable amount, not the amount that you are now paying in very complicated neighborhoods. And we're going to do that for our TIVETS, we're going to do that for our universities so that our university students can live in decent neighborhoods. I was, for example, in a Lupe University in Busia last year, and the students were living miles away. I was in Bukura Technical Training College, and the students were asking me to put lights because they were living in a very far place and sometimes at night when they come, when they, when they go late, they were being mugged along the way. So, we are also providing infrastructure for hostels in all our universities going forward. We are going, it's going to be progressive. We can't build all of them at the same time, but the journey is going to start so that we can deal with that challenge. And you have helped me answer the question about education. Somebody had asked me, my good friend, the first gentleman who had asked a question there. Okay? I am, I am, I am reminded, just hold on. I am reminded that by my good staff, that Kenya West made an operating profit, not a, not a net profit, something between net and operating, somewhere around there. But things are moving in the right direction. That's what I was just trying to say. Oh, I am told there are people behind me here who have not said anything. Okay, my friend, let me start with this young man.
Thank you, sir. I'm Privileunt. I am the President, Lam Universities and Colleges Student Association. Yes, I'm from Peketonye, and I've been sent here, sir, with a question. Back in second of March 2012, 2012, yeah, I was very young. His Excellency, the former President, Hyattimze Mweki Baki, launched the Lamu Port, the Lapset Corridor. And he gave out an affirmative action that 1,000 youth should be scolded, should be taken to college, and empowered to work in the port. But since then, only 400 got the chance to get the scholarship to college and to be empowered to run the program in the port. Now the question is here, the remaining 600. The other day, we saw that the fisheries were compensated. What about the educational sector? What about the passary that remained of the 600, sir? The comrades are really complaining on that. Thank you, sir.
I didn't get your name.
I'm Kabao Kabao Clinton. Thank you.
Thank you, Clinton. Now, um, yes, I agree with you. The government of Kenya made a commitment that, um, because of the situation in Lamu, and I have had a conversation with the Honorable Ruweda, the Member of Parliament from Lamu East, and the Honorable Mudama, the Member of Parliament from Lamu East, including the governor, and on this very subject of Lamu. And I also made my personal commitment that I am going to sponsor as a person 300 students to go to TIVET in Lamu East. I was reminded yesterday by the Member of Parliament Ruweda that she's doing her part, and I have asked her to give me the invoice for my part. But we made a commitment, the government of Kenya made a commitment, Clinton, on, on what to do with Lamu. The progress in Lamu has not been fast enough. We have the first three baths now working. We are trying to get the rest, investment for the rest to be done. We've just done the road. When I came into office, I decided to upgrade the road from Lamu that had been built to Maram Standard. I decided to upgrade it to tarmac from Lamu all the way to Garissa so that we can connect it to the bigger corridor going to Ethiopia. And the expansion and the operationalization of that port is what is delaying. But Clinton, I want to give you my assurance that we will not renage on the commitment that was made by the government of Kenya. As soon as we can see activity in the port, we will unlock all the other opportunities for the 600 students to be trained in port logistics and all the other courses that are necessary for the operas, operationalization of the port. And you will be happy to know that we are actually building, um, uh, here in Matuga. We are, we are building a port logistics and infrastructure college that will train many people on port logistics and all the other things that are required in the port. And maybe students from Lamu may become beneficiaries, may actually become the first students in this college. But I want to give you my assurance, Clinton, that we are going to make that commitment. Yes, let me have one more lady. I think the men have spoken somewhere, maybe on this, on this side, give a lady there. Na, na vijana. Ayah, Mama Alafukijana.
Koba jina naitwa Stella Wandoe, Director wa inua Mama Mashinani, chiangataifa. Your Excellency, Karibu Kwanza Mombasa. Na pia tunashkuru kwa yali ambayo, unendelea kufanya. Soli langu ni kamba, umehanza kutengeneza masala ya affordable houses. Na hapa kuitu Mombasa, kama vile umethaunka, kamba nyali kutakuwa na ujenzi kama hu ambao utendelea. Soli langu, likuende kwa kwa. Kuna kina mama ambao, wako hapa mashinani. Na o mama hawa, wamepitiya changa moto nyenge sana, hivi kamba, wanashindwa kwa access government opportunities. Na uana kampu ya ambazo me-register, na onyependa hata kuchangia katika hizi kazi ambazo ziko pale mkandarasi anapokuwa mepewa. Soli langu ni kamba, hawa mama watasaidi kavipi, hivi kamba, mkandarasi anapuyinkia kwa site. Hawa mama pia, tunabaka kamba, waeweze kupea kipombele, kunamasola ya supplies, kunamasola amengi ambayo, ya ngewasa idia hapa mashinani. Na uki kumbuka kamba, mama huyo, ni mama mbaye, ni mama achini, na maranyenge, hawa mama achini wameachwa kando sana, kwa sababu ya napokuusu kibiashara. Kwa hivo, masola biashara ambayo ipo kwa sasa, ni masola ambayo hii, ni omelita affordable houses, na ni kana kamba, ni vijana natupe kiya kambao na access. Lakini hawa mama imekuacha ngamoto kwa o, kwa hivo, mushimiwa rais, tunabaka kamba, utukumbuke.
Asante.
Pili, tulisign, kwa mfo no kama mimi nilisign charter, nilisign na wewe charter, mushimiwa rais. Hii women's charter, tunapasa kuiitekeleza hapa mashinani. Na fikiri utakuwa na mpango, naomba utakuwa na mpango, ambao unaza saidiya, hawa mama tuweze kualeza, namna hii charter, likuifanya kazivipi, unajua mama mashinani lazima alewe. Diopate kualewa.
Asante. Thank you, Mama.
Vile umesema, mambaya affordable housing, na umesema ya kamba, government opportunities kwa, kwa kina mama. Nilikuwa, um, juzi, nikifungua, uh, Huduma Centre. Na fikiri nilikuwa tarakanidi. Na sijuu nilifungua Huduma Centre tena maalipengine. Na pale katika Huduma Centre, tumeweka desk ya access to government opportunities, the ACBO program. Ambayo niya vijana, na kina mama, waeweze kujua ni vipi, wanaweza kujumuiswa katika biashara ya serikali. Ninga kuuliza Mama Stella, kamba katika harakati za kina mama, waeweze kualewa ya kamba, wako na nafasi ya zilimeya telathini ya biashara za serikali. Lakini kila mama lazima ajitokeze. Nimefurai ya kamba, umesema, kunamama thayari wame-register ma kampuni. Nilikuwa mahali jana, diyani eh? Nilikuwa diyani jana? Eh, pale kinondo. Kuna wa mama pale, nilifurai sana. Kwa sababu niliambia, hawa kina mama, ndio wame sagiliwa, wako na wa kampuni, and in fact, jana, nilianzisha soko, pale ukunda. Nilianzisha soko ambayo, kandarasi hio niya mama, mama mwenyewe, ndio yule ambaya, amepata hio, kandarasi ya milioni miambili, kujenga soko. Jana, pale, pale ukunda. And I was very proud. Nilifurai sana, wakati nili, nilijua ya kamba, kina mama wamejitokeza. Na siyo tu, kutafuta ile biashara ya elifumiambili, elifumiya tano, milioni mbili, sasa kina mama ndio wamesonga-songa, sasa ndio likuana jenga hia soko. Na niliambia, eh, yule ambaya nasimamie waziri wangu Alice, wahome, eh, ambaye tena nimemtawo asimamie sector hio. Na pia yule principal secretary wetu, ya kamba, kina mama, wapewe nafasi, hasa katika program zambazo za ujenzi, kwa sababu tunajua ya kamba, what men can do? Women, I'm told, can do better. Eh, they can do better. So, kunahizo nafasi, lakini najua ya kamba, hazijakuwa za kutocha. Vile vile, umesema kuhusu mambaya affordable housing. Affordable housing ni program ambayo, itampatia mama ule ata wachini. Unajua watuwenge wananiuliza, wewe bana ulizungumzia sana mambaya Mama Mbuga, lakini atuoni Mama Mbuga kwa program zako. Ocha niwajibu hivi. Kwanza, tunajenga soko mia ine Kenya ya wa kina Mama Mbuga. 400 markets across Kenya. Jana peke yake, nilifungua soko pale, nilianzisha soko pale, pale kinondo, pale ukunda, kunakounte aggregation industrial market, pale zombo, kule lunga-lunga. Weekend hii peke yake, nimeanzisha soko ne. Natuko na soko miambili thayari tumapatia na kandarasi. Na mpango yetu itama, itatfikisha soko mia ine. The largest infrastructure for women in Kenya.
the largest infrastructure for women in Kenya to do business. Number two, katika hii program ya affordable housing, itaweze kana kwa Mama Mboga kununuwa nyumba kwa hie program. Jambo ambalo halinge weze kana. Kwa sababu Mama Mboga anaesa kulipa shilinga elfutatu, na apate nyumba, na hie nyumba ikue yake. Number three, nimeweka program ile ya universal health coverage. Ambaye pia itapatia nafasi Mama Mboga aweze kuwa nabima ya afia. Kila moja wetu ajisajili, and we are going to make sure that even women in our markets can have access to universal health coverage and they too can be members of the social health insurance fund. Either they pay between 200 and 300 shillings or those who cannot afford, the government of Kenya will pay for them. So in my mind, I have kept Mama Mboga as part of my plan. Ah, na mbiwa ya kwaamba, muda umetupa kizogo. Eh, hio kiswali sijuu ni nimeishika vizuri? Ayah, tupatie Vijana. Ayah, kunamama ananikijana hapa. Amellete fujo kweli hui Mama, umpatie microphone. Oi!
Eh, President, ugenda vila kunipai ma ikbuana, eh? Koba jina naitwa Aisha Mohammed, na natoka kisauni. Swalilangu ni lili ambalo liboliuza na dadapale kusu National Youth Council, Madam President. National Youth Council was established in 2009. To date, we have seen little progress on that particular institution. And why, Mr. President? I'll give you two things. One, because of lack of political goodwill and goodwill from your side. And the second one is because of akuna pesa kwa National Youth Council. Budgetia yoko less than 100 million, Mr. President. And I want this to be part and parcel of your own dream thing that you'd want to do. How do we ensure that we reignite National Youth Council? Elections the National Youth Council zipaniki. Utupe timelines, Mr. President, because as young people, that is our institution. That is where our voice is at. And if that voice is voiceless, then we don't have a voice, Mr. President. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Aisha. I can see why you wanted the microphone. You are very passionate about it. I think Lucy has also, from the universities, had asked me. I think that the issue we have had with the National Youth Council is that many people see it as a government thing. We need to divorce it from being a government thing so that it becomes a youth, you know, a youth council and let the youth have a final say, without the government influencing what the youth want to do or politicians influencing the outcome of the youth elections. I am open to ideas on how we can reconfigure the youth council. And I really want young people to tell me how they want it done. I am ready to spearhead. So I don't know how we're going to do this together. Maybe I will ask some of our university students to provide leadership. Maybe have an engagement with me, maybe in the course of the next two, three weeks. And then we agree on how we are going to set up that youth council. Not to be the preserve of university students, but to just collect ideas from them. And then we see how youth from all levels, including the Mashinani youth, can become part of that. And let me give you, you told me, let me give you, I must give you timelines. Oi, Aisha, umeni kasa sana. Ayah, okay, okay, Aisha. So my staff, do I have somebody from my office? Who can take it up? Between, maybe Mohammed, will you take that up? So that in the next three weeks, we have a meeting of the young people and then they tell me how they want to take this forward. Finally, let me give to this good girl. Asante sana? Yes.
My name is Leila Sharif. Asante sana Raiz kwa kufika Mombasa, Leila Sharif. Swalilangu ni kwaamba, hapa Mombasa tukona stadium, Mombasa Municipal Stadium, ambayo miya kanyi haya oparet. Na kunamashule mengi, kunamashule mengi, we have special events every year from different schools, primary and secondary. And it's a special place for Mombasa people. It's one of the biggest stadiums. So if we can have you tell us, when can we have this stadium constructed and ready, Inshallah, for the youth and the children? Because this also keeps our youth busy and nimhali amazoezi watakuwa peerless in other things that are not good. Thank you.
Okay, there's another girl here wants to say something.
Thank you. Karibu sana Mombasa, Mr. President. Koba jina naitwa Ramla Nasib, nimkazi wa kisauni. Ramla.
Ramla.
Yes. Sasa, sisi kama Vijana, tumekua tuki tafuta kazi. Kunaweza ngu wengi wameta yakusu, lack of employment to youth. So katika civil servants, most of them, from my observation, that is niwaze ama niwatuazima. Alafu sasa, from ukijana kitambaja pate kazi katika yu civil servant, maybe amekwamze. So how about we introduce an early retirement to the civil servants? So that sisi Vijana tuweze kuexperience, tuweze kufatana fasi hapo kwa gava, ndio tuweze kuexperience kwaamba, how the government tests, you know? That is one. Two, kunajob security, pia haiko sawa in Mombasa and any other part of Kenya. Na pia Vijana, wengi wetu tumesoma. But it took us years to graduate simply because akuna pesa za kusoma. You see, tumestraggle for us to reach where we are. And then ukifika hapo, mali umegraduate, you have that degree, unakuza kwaamba, hau nakazi. So you've been struggling all your years to graduate and now you're struggling to get into that job security. Sasa, sisi kama Vijana, I'll say, I personally am traumatized. Kwa sababu kila nikika, na fikiri vila nilistraggle, kumaliza shule. And now I'm really struggling kupata kazi, niseme kwaamba, yes, my mom had done something, so lazima apate appreciation, you know? So how about you introduce maybe support centers, maybe psychological support centers, where watoto kama sisi, when you're too traumatized in that line of work, tuweze kupata support, you know? Yes, from the experts. Sawa, thank you.
Sawa Ramla and sawa Leila. Let me, let me start with Leila. Leila, ameniuliza kuhusu stadium ya Mombasa. Tulikona mpango ya stadium ambazo tumejenga different parts of Kenya. Watu walikua na niyaku sana, kwaamba iso stadium masikuwa zimekamilika. Sasa tumekamilisha zote. Sasa, ile imebaki sasa, hii ya Mombasa ilikuwa na matatizo. Kwa sababu kulikuwa na kutuelewana kati ya national government na county government ya Mombasa. Lakini sasa tumapata mayelewano. Na tunapanga sasa badala ya kujenga stadium ndogo, tumesema kwa sababu Mombasa, ndio city yetu ya pili kubo Kenya, tujenge stadium ya hieko kiwango ya juu kidogo. Siyo kama zilesengine. Kwa sasa, concentration yetu, iko katika kukamilisha stadium inne ambazo tutatumia kwa AFCON. Niye minajua Kenya, Uganda na Tanzania, tulishinda hosting ya AFCON in 2027. Kwa hivi, your concentration yetu kwa sasa, we want to complete the four stadia that will be used by AFCON. That is where we are committing most of our resources. Lakini, Leila amesema, after we look at the completion of those four, Mombasa, we've already assessed. Maybe we are going to build a bigger stadium in Shanzu or in a place where we'll agree with the county government of Mombasa. So Leila, it's in our plan. Na nakubalia na wewe itasaidia Vijana wa, wa Mombasa. Ramla amesema ya kwaamba, Vijana wengi, wanafanya bidii, wanamaliza shule. Alafu kumaliza shule na bidii ote, tena inatokea shida ya ajira. And it is the reason, ndio sababu Ramla umesikia nikisema hapa. Na nimeongea kwa kirifu, kwaamba, nikweli. Kwanza mimi, kazi yangu ya kwanza, nikuchaguliwa mjumbe, ndio lipata mjahara. The first salary I ever got, you know? I just struggled like many of you who did not get a job. So I know what it means not to have a job. Na ndio nataka nikueleza ya kwaamba, ndio sababu unaona nafanya bidii. Kuakikisha kwaamba kunamipango, ambayo itapatia ajira Vijana wa Kenya. Ramla, nataka uju e hivi. Haita weze kana kwa serikali ya Kenya kuajiri watu ote. In fact, it's not possible for government of Kenya to hire people. We can only hire teachers, doctors, accountants, watu wa fany kazi wa serikali lakini wa chaati. Watu wengi, ni serikali kutengeneza hali ambapo itatsaidia ma kampuni, viwanda, yale vitengo mbali-mbali, watupatie nafasi za ajira. Na ndio sababu unaona nafanya bidii. Kuakikisha kwaamba, kunaprogram za serikali. Vile nimesema housing. Kwa mfanlo, ukiona gazeti ya juzi last week, tulikuwa nanafasi elfune za kazi katika program yetu ya housing. Izo nafasi elfune ni za professionals. Wale wakutoka Tivet, wale wakutoka University, watu ambao ni QSS, watu ambao ni architects, watu ambao ni engineers, different categories in that, in that space. Kulikuwa nanafasi iso kwa serikali. Lakini watu wengi watajiriwa na ma kampuni. Na ndio sababu tunafanya bidii, kuakikisha kwaamba, kunahali ambapo kampuni nyangi zinaweza kuwegeza katika Kenya. Wakiegeza Kenya, ndio watajiri wa Kenya wengi. Ndio unaona tunafanya bidii kuzuia yale products ambazo zinatoka inchizingine, ili tusitengeneze na kampuni za Kenya. Kwa sababu kampuni za Kenya zitaajiri wa Kenya. Ndio unaona tunafanya bidii in those, all those areas, nimetaja hapa. Digital space, export of labor, housing, program on industrialization, program on export processing zones so that we can create more jobs for people like you. But I agree with you. Maybe we need to think about also assisting those who have challenges, psychological challenges, and see what the government can do. It is something that I will take home from here. That there is something that I need to do about people maybe who have been in that space for long and maybe they are affected in one way or another. How do we assist? How do we assist them? That is homework you have given to me. I will go and think about it. Sawa Ramla, very good. So na amesema ya kwaamba, wale watu wamekaka uko kwa serikali wa tembe. Unajua sasa, sheria ya Kenya inasema miaka sitini. Na nimetangaza juzi ya kwaamba, wale ote wamefikisha miaka sitini wa fanya hivyo. Sendio? I don't know, weza kucreate nafasi ngapi, niliona watu wengi wakisema nafasi elfu telatini sijuu, lakini kama zitapatikanaiso elfu telatini, basti. Ndio Vijana pia wata, watajipanga kule ndani. Kwa hivyo, ndugu zangu watu wa Mombasa. Hii, ndio ilikuwa nafasi ya kwanza. Mimi kuwa namazungumzo ya moja kwa moja ana kwa ana na wa Kenya. Muniuulize maswali na mimi nijipo. Hii siyo muixo, hii ndio mwanzo. Na nitafanya hivi kwa mpango. Nitawana kama nitaweza kufanya kila mwezi ama kila bada ya miwi kimbili, nitazungumza na wa Kenya kutoka sehemo mbali-mbali, leo nimefurai sana. Kupata nafasi kuongea na ndugu zetu wakutoka hapa puanikati kama zungumzo haya. I want to say to all of you who interacted with me, asked questions, to tell you, I am truly grateful and I'm very proud that we can have this conversation as Kenya and as Kenyans. And wacha niwatete wale wanahabari ambao walikuwa hapa pia wakauliza maswali. Na fikiri wamenizo e sana kuniuliza maswali. Mbaka wengi wakasema hapaana, wacha tupate wa Kenya wengi pia wauliza hui bwana maswali. So asanteni sana, nataka niwashkuru nyote kwa maswali yenu. Every question you have asked is important to us. And it is important that the people of Kenya hold me to account. Because that is the responsibility that I have as president of Kenya so that I can be able to be answerable to the people. Asanteni sana, mungu abariki, na nawapenda sana. Thank you very much. God bless you.